Police. This change comes in response to the backlash that the agency received after it conducted weakened inspections at local bars in Seattle's Capitol Hill neighborhood, including four LGBTQ bars. Community leaders condemned the unannounced visits, calling them raids on safe spaces. So now the Liquor and Cannabis Board is temporarily suspending its lewd conduct enforcement and work with Seattle's Joint Enforcement Team, and it will not issue citations tied to last weekend's inspections. Advocates for detainees at the Tacoma Immigration Detention Center are calling for greater oversight of the facility. They've released video footage of what they say happened after chemical agents were used on detainees. Gustavo Segreiro has more.
In the 41 minutes of footage from February 1st of last year, guards in armor, riot shields, and rifles enter Unit F4, where four detainees in color-coded detention uniforms have covered their faces with clothing. Once inside with rifles ready, they order the detainees to get on the floor and cuff They've been participating in a hunger strike for better food, more sanitary living conditions, and to be paid the state minimum wage for their labor. There were protesters in other units with around 150 strikers overall. Advocates with the group La Resistencia say they're still trying to get footage of the moment when chemical agents were used against the detainees. A spokesperson for Geo Group, the private prison group that runs the facility, says they follow strict federal standards when they use chemical agents. Gustavo Segreiro, KUOW News.
The city of Bellevue has issued a boil water notice for an area near a recent water main break. They announced the break at southeast 10th Street and 107th Avenue early this morning and alerted drivers about the disruption. The water quality test results should be available in two to three days. This is KUOW.
Support for NPR comes from NPR stations. Other contributors include Fisher Investments. As a fiduciary, Fisher Investments is obligated to act in their client's best interest. Learn more at fisherinvestments.com. Investing in securities involves the risk of loss. This is NPR.
Welcome to Friday. Welcome to KUOW's Week in Review. I'm Bill Radke. This week's unplanned unofficial theme is selective enforcement, fair or unfair. We're going to talk about that with my panelists this week, which are Enrique Serna, retired broadcast journalist, recovering.
Yeah, recovering. I jokingly refer to myself as a recovering broadcast journalist.
You can't stay away. You can't quit.
No, you know how it is. You just, just can't, can't quit.
And you co-host the Chino I Chikano podcast with Matt Chan. We've got Lex Vaughn here, editor in chief of the satirical site The Needling. Slogan, Seattle's only real fake news. Hi, Lex.
Hey, good to be here.
Good to see you. Sandeep Kaushik, political and public affairs consultant in Seattle. You are one-third of the Seattle Nice podcast about city politics. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me.
I can see you, and so can our listeners. You can be a viewer if you want to go on YouTube, search KUOW Public Radio. Okay, so when, as I said, our, our, our theme seems to be this week, when is enforcing a rule fair? And when is it harassment? Which might sound simple, like, well, it's, it's fair if you enforce every rule on everyone all the time, except we don't do that. We enforce rules selectively because that can seem more fair or more efficient. And there were several examples this week, so I didn't know where to start. And when that happens, I always start with nipple gate. But a, a rule of mine.
Oh, gosh.
Seattle has a team of inspectors called the Joint Enforcement Team, made up of Seattle Police, Fire, Transportation, and members of the state Liquor and Cannabis Board. And they enforce rules, liquor rules, rules about permitting, health and safety, lewd conduct. So over the weekend, these inspectors entered 15 Seattle businesses, hookah lounges, restaurants, a roller rink, climate pledge arena, and four Seattle gay bars. At one of those bars, the cuff, inspectors came in with flashlights and took photos of people. Some customers left the bar, and the owner, Joey Burgess, says he can understand why.
They were freaked out. They felt like they were being raided, and this isn't the first time and the only time this has happened. It's a continual thing that happens at our bar.
At those 15 venues, the inspectors noted fired code violations, no business license. And at three of the gay bars, they found uncovered buttocks and an exposed nipple, which you technically can't do where there's alcohol being served. The gay bars and their supporters called this a harassment of queer people and queer spaces. There's a history of that. The Liquor and Cannabis Board said that was not our intention. We're not going to cite anyone, and we have suspended enforcement of the lewd conduct rule. Lex, what was your reaction? Was this the right outcome?
I'm glad to hear that the liquor board is taking some real action and that the legislature is looking at passing laws to make sure that something like this doesn't happen. But it, it does, it's just unbelievable that in 2024, you know, we're like going back to like the 1950s here with this. And it's insane that like this is a city where like nudity is legal throughout the city.
Right.
And, and all of a sudden, you know, I think Burgess had a quote in the Seattle Times about how you could play kickball for charity at a jockstrap at Cal Anderson Park, but you walk into a 21 and over gay bar and you can be cited. There's definitely a chilling effect that this is creating, even if an official sighting isn't happening. And I think that's the purpose of whoever did this at the Seattle Police Department.
You do, you don't believe the denial of the Liquor and Cannabis Board that said this is not a targeted.
I, I really wonder what's going on behind the scenes. I mean, I'm sure that it seems like there's some coordination between the board and local enforcement that, you know, maybe is at odds right now from what I can see in reporting. But yeah, it seems like someone at the city needs to be held accountable.
The optics on this for the liquor control board are pretty bad, let's face it. And, and I think they're probably in a crisis mode here and trying to figure out, okay, well, what? My, my question is immediately, like, okay, why, why did this happen? Who was the one that said, okay, well, let's go here? And, and then I, I'm glad they're putting a pause on this to look at it, but it looks pretty bad.
I, I want to hear from you, Sandeep. Because, because Enrique raised the question, what I, one thing I know is that the Liquor and Cannabis Board told My Northwest that one gay bar inspection was a follow-up to a complaint to police about lack of security and the amount of sexual conduct on the premises. Another was a follow-up after seeing patrons leaving there in January with liquor in hand, one of them falling down drunk. But, but the club owners say we've never been cited for alcohol or violence-related offenses.
You know, I mean, God forbid there's gambling taking place in the, in the casino, right? I mean, I don't know, you know, that there, that there's potentially, you know, people in jockstraps or an exposed male nipple in a gay bar, you know, hardly seems like a, you know, a, a federal offense here. And so I don't think it was just a black eye for the liquor control board. I think it's a black eye for SPD for Seattle police. Like, you know, I first heard about this whole incident when I got a text from my former boss when, you know, back in the day when I was at The Stranger, Dan Savage, who texted me last weekend, and he's like, we're down hundreds of cops in the city of Seattle, and this is what the priority is, like raiding gay bars and, you know, over quote unquote lewd conduct, like, you know, what the hell is going on here? And I think that's a pretty valid point.
Well, this, this stems from the fact that in Washington State, which may be alone in the whole nation, it's, you can't sell alcohol at a strip club. So then they have to have rules about, well, we're selling alcohol at whatever kind of bar this is, then you can't have people getting naked. Well, so if we walk in, let's say we're even are checking, we're checking on a complaint or we're checking on your business license or whatever it is. Do, back to my original question, when do you enforce the fact that, ah, you're showing skin that you're not allowed to show? They didn't get cited. They got noted, the businesses got notified. This is not supposed to go on at your club.
I mean, it's interesting that it's like they're citing lewd conduct. It's just a man without a T-shirt, his nipple exposed. I mean, wow, when in history has that even been considered lewd? A man with his shirt off?
That's lewd.
Forget 1950, when was that ever true?
I don't know, that image of me, of that, just sort of if I see Bill or some people with their shirts off. I should kind of.
My shirt off now.
Engaging a little bit of lewd behavior. Well, I mean, it's, for the community, I can totally understand, particularly in these times, being upset and concerned. Because it's, and, and in this year particularly, because of all the divisiveness, all the concerns about, and just, okay, brings up the past, which isn't, you know, the past isn't that long ago.
Yeah.
Which a lot of people don't want to look at the past, but the fact is, it's there. You can't ignore it. Seattle's been, you know, in the forefront of a lot of things regarding gay rights in the city. So yeah, if you're the community, you, you, you say, hey, this is, that ain't right. Totally. And, and your point, Enrique, about the past being not, not that long ago, I think it's really interesting here because you hear us kind of like going, this is crazy, and we're dunking on this lunacy. What are they doing? But I moved here, what, just barely 20 years ago, and the vibe in Seattle when I came here, you know, we're not talking about the 50s, we're talking about the 2000s, was totally different, right? There was this kind of, what I would call provincial pinch face prudery of old Seattle that was still in existence when I first moved here. And it was things like the one-year strip club moratorium that extended for 17 years and the four-foot rule. Remember that? Where in strip clubs?
A teen dance ordinance.
Yeah, there you go, right. The, the ban on Sunday liquor sales because, oh, God forbid, somebody might show up in church drunk, right? You know, we can't. Well, I've been here since 1975, and I can go back to the time of when there was an initiative, 13 in the city regarding, you know, gay rights issues. And also, two members of the police department were backing that initiative. And so again, it's not that long ago that these things were prevalent here. So, and, and so for the community to, to get ticked about this whole thing, they have every right.
And then, and when we're talking about like not that long ago, how about just like November and December this last year, this proposal from the City Parks Department to put this like children's playground next to a historically known like gay, you know, nude beach. And so it's, it just, it's kind of just unsettling to see how from, from the city itself, people employed by the city, there are these weirdly conservative things, like attacking the local gay community. Like there's that, and you may see them as unrelated, but I think the context does matter. It just seems very strange.
Well, yeah, I'm going to be interested to see kind of what happens next on all of this. And because again, they, they, they screwed this up. Yeah, I mean, clearly there's a backlash and, and LCB is running away from it. I think there will be legislation probably that gets passed.
And running away quickly.
I mean, memo to LCB and SPD, but Seattle is no longer Mayberry with high rises. I mean, remember that, that, that infamous line from then Councilmember Judy Castro, right? That was, that was only 20 years ago, right?
Yeah.
You could legitimately call Seattle Mayberry with high rises, and you can't say that anymore.
Well, but you say, Enrique, you say they screwed this up. This is what the Chair of the Liquor and Cannabis Board said about that. Quote, "When there's laws on the books, it is really hard to say, well, we're just not going to enforce that one. The legislature doesn't like that, and for good reason."
Well, it's a matter of common sense, right? And, and, you know, there's discretion here, right? We don't pull over everybody who's going two miles above the speed limit and give them a $100 ticket, right?
And in fact, there are Seattleites who would like police to be, wasn't that partly what this last election was about? They would like the police to be, to turn their heads less and to do more enforcing of laws that the police are already, that we, they prioritize.
And in some contexts, I'm supportive of that, but this one is ridiculous.
But that is the reality with all of application of law, discretion is happening. And I think we all hope that, you know, the application enforcement of law is only to help increase safety of everyone. But in this case, it's like, who feels safer? It's quite the opposite.
The opposite.
Okay, the other question I have about this, what's the legislature going to do about it?
Right. Because there are legislators, there's a, there's an LGBTQ caucus in Olympia, the session is underway, there are legislators wanting to amend, short session, wanting to amend state law that spells out what you can't expose around alcohol sales. But what change are they actually going to make that's now going to apply in Moses Lake as well as in Seattle? I don't know. Okay, so.
I don't think Moses Lake has a problem with that. I don't know. They're all for male nudity in Moses Lake.
They could be even crazier. No one's watching.
Yeah, yeah.
The jockstrap caucus in Moses Lake.
Yeah. Moses Lake is a good place.
Nothing wrong with Moses Lake. So another enforcement issue this week, let us then turn to a couple of Seattle School Board members resigning after getting away with something that they say was not a big deal, they didn't break any law, and it's a manufactured, manufactured distraction.
People flunky.
Yeah, who, I think, Sandeep, you emailed me first about this. Do you want to just describe what happened and we can?
Yeah, we had, we had the resignation of two of the abrupt resignations of two of the seven school board members this week because they announced that, that they had moved out of the, the district of the city where that, from which they were elected and which they are supposed to represent. And at least in one of the cases, in the case of Vivian Song, I, I don't think there's, there's a lot of ambiguity here. There's been a lot of obfuscation and saying, oh, well, the, the policy and the law is ambiguous. It's not. It says if you move out of your district, that seat has to go up on the next election, which was in November 2023. And Vivian did tell the school district in 2022 that she had moved out of the district. So to me, this looks like a massive screw up, really on the part of the district that a seat that should have been up for election wasn't put up. And, and either they were inattentive and ignored the law, or they were incompetent. And unfortunately, I think this is just the latest in a series of issues we have with the school district that, 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 that raise questions about whether they have their act together.
So this, here's an enforcement that you did want to happen. Lex?
I mean, I think the law is super clear about like what, what's supposed to happen. And like, this is basic election law about, you know, we do have rules there about when somebody, who can run and when they can run and what the criteria are, and I.
I mean, it seems like the, the right thing kind of happened, like they needed to resign, and, you know, maybe some of this needed to be clearer a lot faster. I think I'm just surprised at like some of the reaction this week, like how, how riled up people have gotten about it because I think Vivian Song, this isn't like a new thing for her to be shopping around districts. She kind of openly has been doing that for like the last few years. So it's not, shouldn't be that shocking that she's kind of so all over the place that, you know, there was a gap in legality there probably.
Plus Vivian was a candidate for the council position.
But that probably renewed some.
Yeah, well, more focus there because I think also as she was, you know, interviewing for this and in the public forums, she talked about, you know, being on the school board, but also working on, you know, their financials, which wasn't a good thing because they've got some huge budget problems.
Yeah.
But I mean, if you already know.
So she would have been right at home.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. But I, I don't think I'd use that as a bragging point, you know? So the other part of it is that, okay, you know that you're, you're going to move out of the area. So, you know, you can't hide this whole thing.
And then I don't know how much sympathy to have for, I, I mean, it's been reported that both of the candidates that were the people who resigned from the board, like had family, you know, kind of transitions going on. And I think I have some sympathy for that, but.
Maybe they didn't want to talk about why they moved from one district to another. And if they told, Vivian Song says at least, I'm not sure about Lisa Rivera, but I think they're both saying, we informed the school district about this, and they thought it was like a, in the category of a jockstrap wearing, that it wasn't, it's not hurting anybody. I don't know why, I don't know why the district didn't, didn't enforce it. But the district says, well, we're not the enforcer on this. That's a King County elections issue. So it just didn't get, it didn't get enforced.
Yeah.
Now they say, they, they both, they, they, I think they both signed a letter saying, okay, we'll go. Lisa Rivera said, yeah, I moved out of my district too. I'll go. But that this is a manufactured, this is something that didn't need to be enforced.
Eh, well, if you're running for office and there are requirements, representing people in a particular area, come on.
It probably should be more strict, but I, it's like in the grand scheme of things, it is like, there's so many other weird kind of like points of accountability that aren't, you know, happening in the city. It just surprises me that people got so up in arms about this when it's like, personally, it's like, I'm more, you know, I don't know, my attention goes towards like Seattle police officers that aren't being held accountable for higher crimes. So I think I'm just surprised that people are just so thrown by it. I don't know.
I, I will just say, and I, I kind of said this to some extent earlier, but I think the performance of the Seattle School District has been really shockingly atrocious in, in, in recent years. And there have been a series of issues that I don't think have gotten nearly the attention they deserve. I mean, we are seeing huge problems at the Seattle Schools, huge declines in academic performance, huge loss of students, right? But people.
More so than nationwide coming out of the pandemic?
Ah, you know, I, I, I mean, definitely, it's a nationwide wide problem, but I think in Seattle, there's definitely some indications that, that, yeah, the, the levels of, of academic decline have been really, you know, pretty bad. And the, the, the number of students we're losing from the district are worse than other districts in Washington State, right? There's been some, some material on that. And, and the shocking thing is the district and the board hasn't been particularly interested in asking why? Why are people pulling their kids out of the district? I think because they don't like the answer. So anyway, I, I think there's a lot to be said about what's been happening with the Seattle Schools, and then you have a thing like this, which just looks.
It feels like a breaking point for a lot of things.
A black eye of, on the school district. And we're talking about closing schools next year all across the city.
Yeah.
You know, these are, these are big traumatic things for neighborhoods when a school closes. So, so I think.
School closures are happening outside of Seattle as well.
There are, there are, but, and nothing's happened in Seattle yet, and there's nothing happening this year, but I think there's a, a sense of kind of looming sense of doom. Well, it doesn't help, it doesn't, if you're a parent, it only raises the concerns about the quality of the school district. And, and I suppose why a lot of people, even in the past, have moved out of Seattle to be able to be in a school district that they feel that the child is going to get, you know, a better education. And, you know, it's a big knock on an urban district as well. So that only makes it look that much worse. And so I think that, that's part of the reaction to this, I think, of why people are just like, okay, you know, this ticks me off, I don't like it. So it becomes newsworthy.
Yeah.
If, if the district can't get the basics right of figuring out when a seat should be put up for election, you know, how are they going to get the, get the, get the basic right of educating our kids?
It's kind of like a timeout moment, like, hold up, what's going on?
Okay, well, let's pause here on, on Week in Review, and we're going to talk about another enforcement question. What about, you could, you could call it civil disobedience that interferes with an officer. Do you prosecute that sometimes, always, never? We will definitely discuss when we come back on KUOW's Week in Review.
Week in Review will continue in a minute on 94.9 KUOW Seattle. It's 12:27. Let me just take a moment to thank you for celebrating and supporting local stories, interviews, and conversations, local shows like Week in Review. You are the most important member of the KUOW community. You fuel our efforts capturing the essence of this place we all call home. Let's continue preserving the greatness of our region with more local journalism. Make a gift today at kuw.org and be a vital part of this narrative.
Seattle's been home to many booms. It's brought jobs, people, and wealth to the region.
But also real growing pains. Hi, I'm Monica Nicholsburg.
And I'm Joshua McNichols.
On our new podcast, Booming, we're digging into our local economy and how it impacts you.
Booming is available now wherever you get your podcasts.
Support for KUOW comes from the immigration group at Ryan Swanson Law, lawyers helping individuals and businesses with non-immigrant visas, permanent residence, and citizenship. More information at RyanSwansonLaw.com.
You're listening to KUOW's Week in Review. You're watching it if you're at YouTube, just search KUOW Public Radio. I'm your host, Bill Radke. I'm here with the editor in chief of The Needling, Lex Vaughn, political, public affairs consultant, Sandeep Kaushik, and recovering journalist and podcast co-host Enrique Serna. And we are going to continue now talking about our unofficial theme this week, selective enforcement. We've already talked exposed nipple and buttocks and.
I could talk about that all day.
All day, but if only.
If we worry about you.
It's amazing how this theme works.
Yeah.
We discussed local school board members moving around the city. What about this one? This week, the Seattle City Attorney's Office prosecuted someone who tried to prevent a cop from impounding someone's RV. Lex, what, what happened there?
I mean, to me, what really gets me is like Ann Davison, our city attorney here in Seattle, a Republican, who became Republican during the Trump administration.
It's a nonpartisan seat, but.
But anyway.
We know.
Sure. I mean, she got elected because there were a lot of people thinking, we need to crack down on crime in this city. And here she is, like, spending a lot of time and resources on someone who really was just making a stand for someone who needed, you know, a place to sleep that night. And it's like, is that really the way we become safer? Is that we're going this hard on people who just are very passionate about, you know, stopping sweeps when there's no shelters for these people to go to?
I want to get others' reactions. I'll just fill in the facts that the, from what I know, the RV was illegally parked. The woman living in it said she just needed more time to get the tire fixed. The officer said, no, take your stuff out and go, which she did. And when they tried to then impound the RV, the protester climbed up on it and spent about 12 minutes there, climbed down after the tire arrived. The SPD wouldn't allow the woman to install it, and the protester was arrested for obstructing a public officer. He went to trial, the jury couldn't agree, so it was a mistrial. Any other reaction?
Yeah, I mean, look, in terms of the specific circumstances of this case, at least as, from what I've read, as, as it was reported in The Stranger, I do question the decision to, to, to take this to trial, right? And, and obviously it ended in a mistrial where a majority, four of the six jurors, didn't want to convict, right? So which also I think raises the question of if, if your case is that weak, why'd you, why'd you push it? I will just really quickly say, though, I think there's a broader context here, and this is something I've been saying a lot, but it's not 2020 in Seattle anymore, right? And there was this moment in 2020 that I would describe as almost a kind of semi hysteria that happened in, in Seattle because of COVID and Trump and George Floyd, where, you know, there were massive protests, right? And there was a, a, a way that these were seen, and I think somewhat crudely as sort of righteous protesters, this is John Lewis on the Edmund Pettus Bridge against evil, jackbooted cops, right? That was the whole sort of context of 2020. I don't think that mo, that moment has passed. We, we recently saw a big protest on I-5 that shut down I-5 for hours, and I, and the Washington State Patrol allowed it to happen, didn't arrest it, and they got a ton of blowback off. And so while in this particular case, I'm not sure it was a wise decision to, to take this case, this protester to trial. You know, if you're going to act and engage in civil disobedience and engage in disruptive behaviors, there potentially are going to be consequences for it, and potentially there should be. I think, you know, there should be. I think that the thing here is that the resources being spent on this, and aren't they going to just continue to try to prosecute him again?
I think that's unknown.
That's unknown? They've dropped it. They've dropped it. They dropped it completely? Okay, so.
And someone from the city attorney's office even resigned. I don't know the full story behind that. But I mean, in any case, what this reveals to me is, you know, her election, Ann Davison, there was a lot of talk of just cracking down on crime. And it's like, is that even happening? You know, if you're focused on someone who, in the grand scheme of things, was not making this city more dangerous.
Well, also the backlog that the office has of other cases, you know, stemming from back to COVID and other times. So it's like, okay, is this a big enough case to continue to, to even bring it to, to a trial and do all that? So I think that's what, you know, people are kind of, okay, let's move on.
Yeah.
So that's the bigger thing. I do question this case. Like, I, I will make the argument, I, I don't think Ann, Ann Davison, and the way she's characterized sometimes on social media by the left as some kind of law and order over, I, I don't, just don't think that, that, that fits sort of how she's been, been running that office generally. I mean, I do think they have rebalanced from where they were in 2019 and 2020, where it was all about, you know, ending any kind of, kind of, you know, coercive interventions or, or prosecutorial interventions. But I, I hardly think Seattle is some kind of, you know, war on drugs 2.0 or carceral, some of the, some of the sort of bumper sticker slogans I hear get bandied around by the left, I think are just. Well, I don't, I don't think there's the resources to do any of that anyway.
Well, I don't, I don't think there's the resources to do any of that anyway. So that's, that's one of the bigger challenges. Again, it goes back to the, the backlog of things. And, uh, you're trying to work your way through all of that.
I do think this is, it was a political move to bring this case this far, though, because it's like, like we're saying, I mean, there was, there's a lot of work for the city attorney to do, a huge backlog. Uh, you know, they're talking about not having enough resources to, to do all kinds of things. So why this vendetta, like, you know, against someone who, even if you think they technically broke the law and they're annoying or whatever, like, is this really a vicious criminal we all need to worry about? I mean, they're really standing up, they were standing up for someone who they thought needed to be defended, you know, have their property and their right to a place to sleep that night defended. I don't think that's, um, you know, cracking down on that person is really making any of us safer every day.
So you're saying that she was just trying to make an example here?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I will agree that I don't think the circumstances of this case were particularly like clear cut. I actually think there's a good argument to be made that SPD and the officers that were, that were there in that incident could have handled it in a different way that would have been, you know, led to a, led to a better outcome, right?
It was a productive way to move this person.
I'm not trying to defend this prosecution because I, it looks pretty dubious to me. And if it was a political decision, it was a dumb one on their part because it didn't work, right?
Yeah.
That said, you know, the, the sort of stop the sweeps crowd, like, like that sort of tries to protest, you know, a lot of these encampment removals, you know, at, at some point, if they're crossing the line and disrupting kind of ordinary government functions, right? That, and by the way, we've adjudicated sort of stop the sweeps in multiple elections now in Seattle recently, and the stop the sweep side has lost those elections. So, um, so this is a, you know, a, a, the normal course of government business. And if it's getting disrupted at times in, in destructive ways, I, I'm not against them bringing a case like this. In this circumstance, though, I don't think it was, it was a smart decision or inappropriate.
Well, okay, it's kind of, one last thing. It's just that both sides are trying to kind of make their own point. The stop the sweeps guy and so is Ann Davidson. So, yeah.
Yeah. All right. So I'm hearing some disagreement about the bigger direction of the city, but uh, some agreement about that this was not the, uh, case to choose. This is not the RV to die on.
Yeah, that's right.
Or to stand on.
Or to stand on, I could say.
Maybe it was.
It was, yeah.
All right. So we have been, Lex, we, we discussed the city council moving in this more cop-friendly and business-friendly direction. You also perceive an anti-voter direction, and there might be some disagreement here, too. What, this is, this has to do with whether Seattle can hold its elections, local elections in even years when there are the, you know, state congressional presidential elections instead of the way we're doing it now, odd years.
So, I mean, there's plenty of data and research proving that voter turnout is stronger on even years. Um, and there is like, you know, an effort to, you know, pass laws that put more of the elections on even years to increase voter turnout. And Sarah Nelson, our city council president, like, has, is openly saying that she's like, well, you know, higher voter turnout isn't necessarily a good thing. And I just, I just think that's shocking that someone
What was the quote? Do you remember what, what she said? I thought the gist was, well, more voters doesn't mean more informed voters, or something like that.
That's actually, I think, where the point that she was trying to make.
Yeah, but she's making it in the context of an effort to increase voter turnout. Um, so I mean, it doesn't seem like she's really like supporting more voter turnout. It doesn't work out in her favor.
What are the, what are the arguments? Are there, a voter turn, I think, is pretty consistently well-accepted. People turn out in the even years, the bigger national state elections. What are the arguments against, uh, having local elections at that higher turn, those higher turnout?
Well, one thing I, I wanted to mention here is that I, I called Sarah Nelson and had a phone conversation with her last night about this whole thing. And she said that um, her point really has to do with if you have it in the even years, they're going to get, uh, the local topics, the local, uh, whatever is going to be voted on locally will, won't get the coverage and won't get, uh, as it would during the, the odd years.
Right. Local issue gets swamped.
It'll be overwhelmed. They'll be swamped by the bigger issues, the, you know, the candidates running for governor, senator, whatever. And that the local issues will just be overlooked. So that's why she is for them staying in the odd years.
Yeah. Um, look, I, I went and I pulled the full quote, uh, from the council briefing with, where, you know, council president Nelson was talking. And frankly, I think the way this got portrayed, first in The Stranger and then on social media, was a really unfair smear job on, on Sarah. And she wasn't saying, I'm for lower turnout or I'm for, you know, The Stranger characterized that she wants to suppress the vote, and this is akin to, you know, literacy tests and Jim Crow 2.0. And they kind of did this whole thing that then got amplified in, I think, an incredibly unfair and distorted way. What the argument she was making, when you look at the whole context and The Stranger pulled one line out of a paragraph, you know, shorn of any, is exactly what Enrique is saying. She, she's saying, look, yeah, we get higher turnout in, in even years, but there's a trade off here, right, that we got to think about. And the trade off is, do we lose a lot of public and civic and media engagement with these local races because there's going to be so much of the attention is going to be focused on presidential and gubernatorial? That's an argument I've made on, on Seattle nights. We, I, I, I think there's a very plausible argument to, to make the switch. There are, but there's a plausible argument on the other side that we should take into consideration. That's the only point that she was making. It wasn't about voter suppression. And I do think this is where the left, like, they have a lot of substantive issues where they disagree with Sarah Nelson, where she disagrees with them. And I think it's perfectly fair for them to go after her on all of that. This one, I think, is more, I think, um, tells us more about some of the problems on the left than it does about
Well, Sarah Nelson also said in, in response to the, the article in The Stranger, I said, well, what did you think about it? And she says, well, they're going to say what they're going to say, which means that they, they have a point of view, and that's the point of view they're going to take. And that isn't, it doesn't seem like it's going to
I also think it's pretty like bold of her to openly not support a thing that has proven to increase voter turnout when she just appointed a city council candidate that lost the most recent election. Um, so I, I just think
How does that, how does that, what, what, I don't understand.
Tony Wu
Yeah, I know. I know Tony Wu.
And then he got appointed to the city council.
Right.
So it's like, you know, on top of not showing clear support for legislation or, or an effort that could increase voter turnout, um, she's also
I don't understand how that connects to the Tony Wu.
It connects because someone who lost an election still got a seat on the city council. And so a lot of people who did not want her on the city council feel like, wow, um, my decision here to make her nut be on the city council didn't count.
Well, but I, I guess I have to point out the one thing in response to that is that Tony Wu only lost by 400 votes and nearly knocked off an incumbent in a pretty close race.
And it was a district race, not a citywide race.
It was a citywide race.
But isn't it fair for, I, I think I hear Lex also saying, um, okay, we also are wise enough to know that, um, when a, someone more, it's going to benefit, uh, Sarah Nelson more to have, in your opinion, well, you could speak for yourself, but you, I, you, you seem skeptical.
Saying something like very clearly, um, condescending towards people here in the city when she's saying like, well, maybe it's better if some people don't vote.
Okay. Well, whether, that, we already adjudicated the condescending
Yeah.
What I'm, listen, what I'm trying, what I'm suggesting, though, so separate from whether, whether, from that, the context of her remarks, isn't it fair to notice when a, a group advocates a kind of election setup that happens to benefit that group?
Sure. You can make the argument that, that, um, and, and look, I think this is
Do you accept that? That higher turnout is better for progressives in Seattle?
I don't actually. No. And this is the point I was about to make, right? I think this is, um, this is, um, it's a kind of, um, article of faith, I, I think, on the left that, um, higher turnout in elections generally, and in Seattle particularly, lead to more progressive results and outcomes. But that used to be true in Seattle 10, 12 years ago. That was, I think, the case. But for various changes and kind of polarization and how the electorate works, I can actually make a very strong argument to you from the last couple of election cycles that the left does best in lower turnout primaries than they do in higher turnout general elections in Seattle. Now, I do, I think there are limits on my argument on this. I think once you get to like 85% turnout levels, you are turning out a lot more infrequent, younger renter voters. So that may, I, I think, what I'm saying is it's complicated, right? There isn't some linear, like, oh, we jack turnout 5% and suddenly the left wins every election and we stop the sweeps and, you know, whatever.
But I also think that there's a, a deep concern about voter turnout, um, locally, and particularly in communities of color. We don't turn out when we, we should be turning out. We, we need to be involved. We need to be part of the process. And, um, I mean, that, that even in the Tony Wu, Tammy Morales thing, uh, that is still an issue of getting people, the communities of color to get interested in the process and be part of the process and not just think, well, my vote doesn't count.
So are you saying even your elections benefit communities of color, even if local issues get swamped?
I think that in even years, yeah, because the bigger what's happening nationally and all of that, that will bring people out. There's a, yeah, it does.
In the mood. It's like season.
Well, yeah.
Get into it.
Well, then you've got, you've got, you've got Trump. You've got all of that that brings people to, to the polls. And, um, so yeah, that makes a big difference.
Okay. I, I was just, just to close my thought, I'm, I think higher turnout is good, right? You know, like, I'm not trying to
No matter the political pursuit.
Yeah, no matter the
I don't think you should be saying it based on that.
Participation is a good thing. All I think
How can you not want to
All I think Sarah Nelson was trying to say, and that, that I've said in the past, is that there are other variables here, too, that we should at least take a look at, right? Before, before making these decisions, right? And demonizing people for saying that, I don't think is a good look for the left.
Okay. I think we're anti-demonizing. Can we, can we agree there? All right.
I want to know, are there nipples involved?
Yeah. Okay. Wow. Okay. Now, let's take a break on that.
You start it.
I'm, I'm going to finish it. We're going to take a break and come right back with more. We're going to finish Week in Review.
Hi there. I'm Kim Malcolm, inviting you to join me for a refreshing break from the mundane on All Things Considered. You'll hear in-depth local and national reporting, plus a creative dollop of culture, arts, science, music, and more. Listen weekdays starting at three at KUOW or stream live on kuw.org.
Support for KUOW comes from Cambium Landscape. Since 1998, working with clients, tastes, and home architecture to create and nurture landscapes that complement their outdoor lifestyles. Now accepting new estate garden maintenance clients. Info and portfolio at cambiumlenscape.com.
I'm Julian Marshall, host of BBC NewsHour. On today's program, more than 800 serving officials in the U.S. and Europe criticized their government's policies on the war in Gaza and reported deaths from starvation in Sudan, where the conflict has displaced millions of people.
You will hear those stories and a whole lot more today on BBC NewsHour. It begins at 1:00 PM, right after Week in Review on 94.9 KUOW.
We are rounding up this edition of KUOW's Week in Review. I'm Bill Radke, here with political consultant Sandeep Kaushik, The Needlings, Lex Vaughn, and co-host of the Chino E. Chicano podcast Enrique Serna. And the King County Executive and the mayor of Seattle declared homelessness an emergency seven and a half years ago. So it wouldn't all be Seattle's burden. They created the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, and this week that agency said it's appointing a new interim CEO. Sandeep, we'll have more time to, to get into this later as we actually see what happens on the homelessness front. But you say there are real questions here. Is this agency going to survive? Should it survive? I would say, what if it doesn't?
Yeah, I think there are, it's been clear that, uh, while the idea of regionalizing our homelessness response is a great idea in theory, it's not at all clear that it's worked very well in practice. Uh, we have very limited buy-in from the suburbs, uh, on this. We've got a, a governance structure for King County RHA that the mayor himself recently said is incredibly convoluted and doesn't seem to be working very well. Um, there have been a series of, there's no independent funding source for King County RHA, so all of their money comes from either the county or the city. So they're not really independent, though, and, and it creates tensions because when the city gives them all this money and says, oh, we want to build some tiny homes with it, and the King County RHA says, no, we don't like tiny homes, it's going to, it creates natural conflict.
So, so the listener might want to know, how will I notice this? You know, is it, is it going away? Does, what would that mean for homelessness?
Well, well, first of all, the fact that we've got another interim, right? Mark Dones, the, the, the initial CEO, resigned last May. We're not going to have a, um, new CEO, permanent CEO, probably till the second half of this year, if it happens at all. So the primary agency regionally that's supposed to deal with our biggest problem, homelessness, is essentially rudderless and directionless.
It's a leadership issue. It's a leadership. I mean, they're, they're kind of like a bad NFL team that's going through a cogit.
Yeah.
You know?
All right. Well, uh, let's, let's put a, uh, put a pin in that because we're going to see, we're going to, I, I mean, that funding, the, the, the donor kind of umbrella group we are in, that imploded. It's just a lot of stuff happening and we'll see.
The business community is still very invested in the regional approach, and they're pushing to reform and save King County RHA, and maybe that will work. But I think it's unclear what's going to happen.
Okay, we'll watch it. Here are a few other news items from the week we haven't gotten a chance to get to yet. The price of the express toll lanes on 405 and 167 are going up to a maximum $15 in March.
Whoa.
Public testimony basically was like what you just did. Whoa.
Is that going like straight to Medina?
Right. Well, the, the testimony was against this, but the Transportation Commission said, look, we got to charge enough money that some drivers say, no, thanks. Uh, so that makes the toll lanes run faster, but that, of course, means the free lanes run slower. And critics, of course, complain it's too expensive and that it's the state voting to take more money for itself. But the Transportation Commission says, well, that extra state income is going to pay for the road projects you like. So that's where that's at. It's going to get more expensive. Okay. Another issue this week, a state Republican state senator is sponsoring a measure that you might usually associate with Democrats. Enrique, you flagged this. What does Pasco Senator Nikki Torres want?
She is, uh, proposing legislation that would require all state agencies to identify on their websites which programs and services, uh, accept applicants for, with federal deferred action for childhood arrival status. That's DACA. And actually, what's interesting to me about this is that she's a Republican from the tri-cities. You would think that a Democrat would be, uh, would be proposing this legislation. This legislation, I, I was talking to Bob Hasegawa and, uh, you know, who's a senator from Seattle. Um, it looks like it has a pretty good chance of, of passing. Uh, it's, it's going to help the DACA recipients. But again, the interesting fact is that it's being proposed by a Republican. And I think that's interesting because I think it's going to raise her street cred in the tri-cities and her community, which is, uh, I don't know, it's probably 50% Latino over there. She's a first generation, although she was born here. Uh, and her parents, I mean, were, came here from Mexico, but she was born here. So, um, it's just an interesting tidbit because not exactly the type of thing that Republicans around the country are supporting because they're not.
You think she'll pay a political price in Yakima?
I, no. I, I think it'll help her. I mean, it might tick off all of her Republicans in that area.
Well, she is a Republican.
Yeah, I know. But it's going to play to the crowd.
Every now and then, Eastern Washington surprises you. You know, I think sometimes it's like, they're so relatively conservative and Republican over there.
Yeah.
They sometimes surprise themselves about what kind of like relative, like progressive thing they're supporting. Like, I mean, Spokane has passed some things that are more progressive on housing than Seattle has. It's like, wait, what's happening here?
And nobody, and their homeless issue
Their homelessness
It's really a, a, a big problem in Spokane.
Yeah.
You know, we talk so much about here. Anyway, it's, uh, I think, smart move for this senator. She's only been there for, since 2022. Um, you know, whether her, people in her party don't like it or not, tough. I think, I think it'll pass.
I'm thrilled to see it. I'm glad you flagged it. Enrique, good for her.
Yeah.
You, you, you flagged something else for us and you sent audio. Enrique, a former
I travel with audio.
Yeah, this is what we do. Um, a former, wait, I thought you were a retired
Yeah, well, recovering, you know, that recovering thing, yeah.
Um, so we heard this week, the sad news that a former First Lady of Washington passed away. Nancy Bell Evans was the wife of Republican Dan Evans, who was governor from 1965 to 77. That's right, a Republican. And, and you brought some audio, Enrique, of you interviewing the couple. When was this?
This, I can't remember. I think this was probably back in 2007 or so, back then. Uh, might've been past that time. Um, we did a program with the University of Washington honoring Dan and Nancy Evans for their service, uh, well over 50 years at the time. Uh, but Nancy tells, uh, it's an interesting story about when Dan would get long-winded.
Can I just play it?
Yeah, yeah, please do, please do.
It'll speak for itself. This is
Yes, it will.
You trying to get it to tell a funny story.
Right, yeah.
Tell me about listening to him give a speech and the signal you had.
I don't want to do that. Because I just used it.
My hearing is as good as it used to be.
The signal, if you don't know, is that you coughed.
I do. I cough, yes. And I could be way in the back of the room and he could, he would hear it. Because sometimes, you know, you get going and you just get going a little bit too long. And I, and I, I really didn't do, have to do it often, but there were occasions when he was really wound up. And I just, you can always sit and listen for so long and then, you know, and I would cough and bless his heart. And I would cough and bless his heart, he would, I could see him, hear him winding down and he would close it up.
But I understand, one time you were giving a speech and you thought, I'm doing really well. This is a good speech, but you kept hearing this cough.
Absolutely. And I didn't know what the heck was wrong and I kept throwing notes away and working my way down. Got down and, and got off the podium, went back to Nancy and said, what was wrong? I said, nothing, that was a great speech. I said, you were coughing all of the time. Oh my God.
Cold.
Yeah, the cold. It sure ruined the speech.
We all, my wife does, her version is to put her foot next to my foot, like I can feel. I know exactly what that is and we all need an edit.
Yeah. You know, I just want to say that Nancy Evans, well, she and Dan, they were, talk about perfect couple for each other. Because she was his partner in, in the whole political process. Actually, you know, she had kids, she had a child and when she was, first went to the state capital in Olympia, they had two boys already, small boys, and then another boy that was born in there. But they were both involved in the community, they care about the community, and she was, I think, a loving partner to him. And, and they were, they just were this great couple, power couple. And you can't have, they just were the best. And I just really liked her a lot and just, may she rest in peace.
Nancy Bell Evans, the wife of Republican Dan Evans, who's still alive, 98 years old.
Yeah, that voice of God, that, you know, that voice he has is just incredible.
And kind of the old school Northwest Republican.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Dan Evans purged the John Birch aside from the Republican Party in the 60s, right? And, yeah.
I talked to him a couple of years ago, we were talking at another event and, you know, about the whole thing about Trump. And he says, oh, he's going to go away. And Nancy's, he said, Nancy doesn't think so. And so Nancy was right. She had a pretty good political barometer.
I was like, it's like such a great resource for keeping some of these politicians in check at home.
Look, we got two minutes left of this show. I just, I want to leave listeners something to smile about. I'll make mine quickly. The Seahawks have a new coach, Mike McDonald. I had heard his former high school football coach say how smart he was, so I read more. I found these quotes from three NFL players. Jadevion Clowney called him the smartest defensive coordinator he's ever seen. Patrick Queen, nobody does it like him, nobody will do what he does. Roquan Smith called him a mad scientist. And finally, I'd like to read from a piece in the Baltimore Sun, quote, "When Leonardo da Vinci was painting The Last Supper, he would sometimes stare at his work for an hour, make a single stroke, then leave. Men of lofty genius sometimes accomplish the most when they work least, Da Vinci said, for their minds are occupied with their ideas and the perfection of their conceptions to which they afterwards give form." Da Vinci, of course, was an unrele, I'm still reading. Da Vinci, of course, was an unrelenting perfectionist, a label that could also be applied to Ravens defensive coordinator Mike McDonald in his creation of a masterful and historic unit.
Okay, I can see a video promo by the Seahawks with him and a scientist doing, you know, creating.
It's just getting me excited about this new character. So we go from Tom Sauer to Leonardo da Vinci.
But I thought, I'm not going to be able to, I'm not smart enough to be able to understand this guy. So this week, the Seahawk.
What was Leonardo's position on the blitz?
Well, we'll find out, we'll find out.
Do it.
Mike McDonald was introduced this week and he said.
This is a special city and we got the best fans in the world. And I understand where this organization wants to go and I'm just juiced to go do it.
Whoa, slow down there, Da Vinci. I don't, I don't understand the biomechanics of being juiced, but I do know that the Seahawks missed the playoffs and they're hoping for a renaissance.
Well, no, they say the, they call the NFL, not the National Football League, but for not for long. You know, that's the thing in pro football, that it's not for long. So he's got to, he's got to come in, he's got to win.